Good evening, everyone. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good to see you. Excuse me. Great to see everybody. Uh, time is seven o'clock. In accordance with chapter two of the Acts of 2023, the February 11th, 2025 joint meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. Uh, the agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Vice Chair Chris Gallo. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Um, J- Selectman Anderson?
Anderson's here.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington here.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Ross here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Intrum Town Manager Mike King?
Present.
Uh, Assistant Town Manager Greg Enos?
Yeah.
Executive, uh, Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo?
Present.
Okay, the Select Board meeting is now open. At this time, I'd like to turn it to Chairman McKnight to open your meeting.
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Gallo. Um, we have a motion from the Planning Board, uh, to open the Planning Board session, part of this for the joint meeting, Planning Board and Select Board for February 11th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. A second in discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Boassi?
Aye.
Mr. English?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Lawrence is not here. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Orbin?
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams?
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye. Six in favor, one absent, no one opposed. Planning Board meeting, joint meeting is open.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so at this time, just want to, uh, you know, a quick summary as to what the, what the, um, what we're trying to get accomplished tonight. Um, and with the Planning Board, I just want to say thank you all so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to having this joint meeting with us. Um, as you know, uh, the MBTA Communities zoning bylaw has been a very big topic of discussion, uh, and continues to be. And, uh, the action plan tonight is actually to discuss the action plan for the MBTA communities. Uh, so, uh, what I'd like to do, if possible, um, would be to turn it back over to the Planning Board and ask you to have your discussion, uh, to begin the discussion by going over the action plan, Mike. Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, the dates and recapping conversations that you might have had at your last meeting. Um, and you know, obviously then you guys would kind of have a discussion and then you kind of pass it back over to us and the Plan, uh, and the Select Board might have our own discussion, if that's okay.
That sounds good. Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, so at our last meeting, uh, and with Rachel's help, uh, in drafting, uh, parts of the action plan, uh, we had our meeting last Wednesday night. We went through the action plan. There were a number of comments and questions which I believe we've now answered. Uh, to the, uh, uh, from various members of the board. Um, we have filled out the action plan, which I believe you have in your packets. Uh, there are some comments on it and clarifications. Uh, we also discussed, and we can go through those. There are a couple of things that I'd like to clarify with that, but then we also talked about the, um, the next steps on this, and part of the next steps which are listed in the back of the action plan are to actually have the Planning Board republish and reopen a, uh, public hearing in the Planning Board, at which time we would then entertain thoughts, questions, motions. I think the board in general thought that the action, the plan that we had put forward initially still remains intact. We haven't heard a lot of comments or questions, but, uh, we have to go through the process of opening it up, uh, the Planning Board and then closing that public hearing again, uh, based on, uh, the work that we did prior. I don't see a tremendous amount of, uh, don't foresee a number, too many meetings and/or a lot of comment, but we will allow people to comment if they have any questions on the plan that we put forward and the sites that we selected. Um, I, I guess, um, we can go through this line by line, or I can get to the one thing that I wanted to clarify, which came up in discussions, and I think we've, uh, we've settled on is, uh, in addition to, um, opening the Planning Board meeting, there was a lot of discussion around whether we shouldn't go out to the public and start an outreach again. It is one of the items in the action plan. Um, but at the end of our meeting, we determined that the work that was done prior to uh, would suffice, um, with the recording that we did in front of the public, all of the information we put out on different websites. And, uh, we felt that reaching back out and having meetings with, uh, with the public again uh, wouldn't be a fruitful event. So, um, in the, on the third page of the action document, there is a comment about public outreach, and I've clarified that. And in the final document before we have a vote to have this signed, uh, or, or, uh, ask members of the Planning Board to, uh, vote or to recommend favorable action. It says public outreach, but my understanding is, and we'll clarify it, is that that is strictly the notice period for the Planning Board's next public hearing that we would start on this again. So, uh, at this point, uh, no further public outreach, um, is in the plan nor being contemplated. Um, and so I, I guess, uh, I can go through it, but it may be more better use of our time is to see if anybody has any questions. Uh, and if you haven't read it, I'd be happy to go through it, but see if anybody has any questions about the action plan that's in the package. And certainly for the Planning Board, um, any comments or questions that Rachel has not been able to answer since our Wednesday meeting. So, um, happy to entertain, uh, comments or questions, and I'll go through the board, uh, members to see if they're willing to recommend favorable action, uh, to the town, uh, to process this, uh, this action plan by the deadline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you for the introduction, and I recall the, uh, I recall our summation being exactly what you said. Uh, my only suggestion, uh, suggestions relative to the plan were basically proofreading, and I had a couple of questions about it, particularly about, uh, section 3.1 and, uh, the choice of, uh, of, uh, option C there. Rachel Benson explained, uh, clearly to me why we, why we should follow that. I understand it and, uh, why we should go with, uh, C as the preferred answer in section 3.1. And the rest of the language is fine, and I think your explanation about, uh, about the uh, so-called public outreach was, um, was spot on. So, thank you.
And, and I think we did not have a lot of conversation about that last Wednesday. I might ask Ms. Benson to just explain to the group why, why C versus, uh, an overlay district of other types would be the recommended approach. If, uh, if I could so, when I saw Rachel on, really?
Sure. Rachel Benson, Director of Planning and Economic Development for the Town of Rentham. So within, as I've provided to you guys, um, section three preliminary zoning strategies, there's a number of questions. On the online form, when you select, it's, you know, it's a sort of a pulldown. You can select all that apply. For 3.1, you have, um, five different options. Um, you can choose A, you're going to be using a, an existing zoning district or districts that might already comply with section 3A. B, an existing zoning district or districts that must be amended to comply with section 3A guidelines. C, a new 40R or other overlay zoning district. D, a new base zoning district or districts, or E, other zoning strategy. So in this case, you would want to choose C. It just so happens that 40R is also included in this section, but it does not need to be a 40R district. Um, you're not, you're not amending any of your existing zoning, and you're not creating a new base zoning. A new base zoning would be your residential 30 or RD 87 or C1, C2, that type of a thing. Um, and other zoning strategy, that does not fit here. You're doing an overlay, so.
Thank you, uh, Rachel. I didn't, I saw the 40R, and that, that was the one that triggered my head, but I didn't refer far enough to see other overlay district, and this is the other overlay district, as you described. Okay, um, I guess the, the, before we go to the board for that question, the Planning Board for that question, um, we've put an end date here of a public hearing, an estimated end date. Um, and we've got this into June, although it's up to, uh, June 2nd. Um, I think that, that fully meets, uh, being ready for a town meeting, if we so choose, before the deadline in July. So I think we've covered the bases there. And as I described, uh, the only thing we would do is post a notice and have Planning Board meeting as we need to re- repost for this and open the public hearing and then close it before town, we go to town meeting again. So. Any other questions on the, um, MBTA action plan? I would ask the, the Planning Board members if you are willing to recommend favorable action uh, to the Select Board and our, uh, our Town Manager, Mr. Boassi?
No questions or comments right now. I would, uh, support favorable action with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. English?
Uh, no further comments, and I too, uh, recommend favorable action.
Mr. Maloney?
Uh, no further comments, and I, I, uh, support favorable action as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Orbin?
Uh, no comments from me, and I also support favorable action.
Mr. Woodhams?
Uh, no comments from me, and I support favorable action on this.
And I too, uh, support favorable, favorable action to the Select Board and the Town Manager. Um, I think that was our part of this, uh, uh, Vice Chair, and if you, uh, like this back or have any questions?
Okay, hang tight for a second, Mr. Chair. All right, at this time, I'm going to open up to the Select Board. Um, ask, uh, please feel free to, you know, make any comments, ask any questions through me. If I can't answer them, I'll ask, uh, Mr. King or Ms. Benson, um, if they could help address the question. So, uh, start, starting with Selectwoman Rouse.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo. So just to clarify through you, um, we're going forward with the two zoned properties that were presented in the December meeting.
Uh, at this time, that is my understanding, that those are the properties that were selected, and those are the properties that we are moving forward with. Um, that does bring up an interesting question that I have to the Chairman McKnight. If during this process, some member of the public were to reach out to us and ask the Planning Board to relook at one of the parcels or make a recommendation to investigate any other parcels, would your board be willing to entertain that?
Yes, and, and, uh, we would keep the Select Board, um, um, well informed on that, so that there were no surprises, and we would make sure that before we close a public hearing, uh, that, you know, people who are aware, if we're going to make a change from what we presented last time, what the change is, and to make sure that we aren't making uh, a change that, uh, we might have disagreement on or can't work through, and maybe that's through the subcommittee, um, that we had last time, or a joint, another joint meeting with the Select Board and the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Selectwoman Ross, back to you. Any further questions, comments?
No further, uh, questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Selectman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, so this, this question really isn't for the Planning Board. Um, I was wondering, last time we had discussed this at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, strength in numbers and getting together with other communities. Um, have we done that yet? Have, have we gotten any indication, like, um, with the other communities? I know there's, there's still numerous communities that are not compliant. Um, and I don't think have any intention of being compliant.
Yeah, great question. Before I pass it over to Mr. King, um, I, I'll just clarify the best I can, Selectman Anderson. So the intent was, as part of one of our action items, um, per our charge, led by you, which we all supported, uh, uh, Intrum Manager Mike King was going to reach out to other communities, especially the 30 or 31 that were still not in compliance, uh, and take a temperature on those. Um, I think that is in the process. I will say that the purpose of this, and I, I'm not sure if you're asking this, but the purpose of this meeting is to get support to push forward with this action plan so that we can stay in interim compliance while we continue to do all the rest of our, our investigative work. Uh, while we still await, remember, we're still waiting on two very important pieces of information from the state. We never received, uh, uh, we never received a determination on the unfunded mandate law, and we've never received a fiscal impact analysis. So that's, you know, people talk about Milton. Milton was only one of the reasons that, um, the majority of our voters, it, it seems like anyway, uh, came out and voted no the last time. So I'm not sure if that clarifies, and then I will turn it over to Mr. King to answer your direct question, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo. Uh, so we have been doing research and reaching out to communities, and of the 31 communities that are required to submit new action plans by February 13th, um, nine have submitted new action plans thus far. Um, so that's Duxbury, East Bridgewater, Georgetown, Hamilton, Marblehead, Middleton, Needham, North Reading, and Norton. Um, we are aware of two communities that have actually vote, had a vote to not submit new action plans. Um, those are Marshfield and Middleborough. Um, several communities have actually have action plans on their Select Board agendas tonight, just like we do. Um, I imagine we'll have a better sense of which communities have decided whether or not to submit action plans, um, later this week. Um, and I've been in touch with the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, and they've been very responsive in terms of, uh, providing information as to who has submitted action plans. Um, and I will provide an update, um, at weekend.
Selectman Anderson, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you so much. No further questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Selectman Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, um, I'm not sure if this is for Mike McKnight or Rachel Benson, but hypothetically, if we move this forward for you to revisit and you decide to make a property change, would that require, wouldn't that require a special town meeting? Because the, the town has already rejected the two that we chose, and now you're going to re-present it. Would it require the town to have a separate meeting to revote for a different property and then to move forward with it? Or am I, did I read it incorrectly when I was following the rulebook there?
Um, thank you, uh, Chairperson Harrington. I believe, just like we did with our first hearing, we would, if we made some changes or changed sites or modifications to the zoning bylaws, we would vote as a Planning Board to do so, and then that would be moved to the uh, town meeting, the next town meeting to be voted on. We wouldn't make any changes, as I said, without making sure that we were in in communication with the Select Board and making sure, but it, but just like we did the first one, the Planning Board voted on the final recommendation to go to town floor.
Okay, thank you. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Um, Mike King?
So, uh, just, just to clarify, you're asking if, um, if can, can the Planning Board bring forward another overlay district that has a substantial change?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so just, just to take a step back on, on two parts, um, the, the previous overlay district can be brought forward again if there is a positive Planning Board recommendation. Um, even though it was voted down previously in December. And if there, if the Planning Board did, uh, vote to recommend a district that with, that had a substantial change, which would be, you know, changing locations possibly, um, then that, then that could also go before town meeting as well, um, as part of the action plan.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, um, you're very welcome. So just to, uh, before we, before I ask our board, um, if we support, uh, the, the notion to move forward the action plan, just to make sure everyone's on the same page from our board. Um, reason we're doing the action plan, right, is so that we, we maintain our interim compliance. Uh, I had Mike King, um, I had Mike King reach out to Town Council and, and, uh, Intrum Town Manager King, please feel free to chime in. I wanted to be perfectly clear that us agreeing to move forward the action plan by no means, uh, meant that we were going to necessarily vote to approve the zoning bylaw. Um, and there was nothing that the state could hold against us by voting to move forward the action plan. The action plan, in my humble opinion, and I'm open for discussion, uh, uh, from either board, um, uh, is doing just that, keeping us in interim compliance until we get the necessary information that we're still waiting for from the state with regard to the unfunded mandate law ruling with regard to the fiscal impact analysis, um, and keeping us in interim compliance until we get that information so that if and when we get that information, we can call a special meeting and bring this back to the townspeople to have them vote once and for all, uh, what they want for our community. Um, is that a, is that a fair statement, Mr. King? And does any, and any, anyone on either of the two boards have any questions or comments on that?
Um, Vice Chair Gallo, you summarized that well.
Okay, um, now, here comes the crutch, and I want to bring this up. So it is on, it is on record. The interesting thing that we said at town meeting was, the majority of the townspeople voted no because we were waiting on three things. Milton, unfunded mandate, ruling, and fiscal impact analysis. We know what happened in Milton. As I've already stated, we still don't have a ruling on the unfunded mandate law, and we also don't have the impact analysis. Something interesting that could come up that both boards should keep in mind. If we be, if we, and I don't think this is going to happen, but we at least should say it. If we come close to the deadline in July and we still don't have a ruling on the unfunded mandate law or a fiscal impact determination, we're going to be left in an interesting position on do we bring that back to, do we call a special meeting and bring that back to the townspeople, even though we don't have all the information? Or do the townspeople already vote 550 to 50 that, and, and vote it down? So just so you know, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but that is something that the Select Board is going to have to weigh very heavily. Um, so, uh, with that being said, any further discussion from the Select Board on this? No? Seeing none? Then I would ask the Select Board, um, if there's any opposition in submitting the action plan. Um, and if there's not, we can go ahead and, and give Mike King the authorization to do so. If there is, if there is opposition, then I will then turn it into a formal vote. So anyone have any opposition? Any further discussion? No? Seeing none? Mike, I think, um, that speaks loudly. I think the Select Board is going to take the Planning Board recommendation, and we're going to ask you to please move forward with, um, completing and submitting the action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I will do that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that. We will keep both boards abreast of any developments, and as always, thank you, uh, for the, the support of the residents. Um, at this time, let's move to the next, uh, topic of discussion. Chairman McKnight, if that's okay with you. We have a discussion of the right of first refusal for a piece of property located at 2095 West Street. Um, so my understanding is, we have the right of first refusal. Uh, we have a lot of, a certain amount of time for us to exercise that right or express interest in exercising that right. And my understanding is also that we've reached out to the other stakeholder boards. Um, and some of them we've received responses from, and some of them were waiting on responses from. Uh, Mr. King, uh, is that correct? I think we have to, obviously, we want to get input from Open Space Conservation CPC. Uh, and if there, obviously, our two boards, is there any other boards that we'd like input from?
Uh, we've, I would just add that we've, uh, we've received a letter from Recreation, from the Recreation Director as well, um, recently in regards to, um, the acquisition of the property. Uh, Open Space met last week. Uh, I have, we haven't received an official letter in terms of their vote, uh, but it is, it is our understanding that, that they voted favorably. Um, regarding the acquisition, um, Conservation's meeting later this week on the 13th, and CPC later this month on, um, February 26th. And just to kind of, you know, talk a little bit, you know, about the financials while, while both boards are here. Um, there's $600,000 in the, um, CPC funded land acquisition fund. Um, these funds are available for the Conservation Commission to purchase land with Select Board approval. Um, a conservation restriction would need to be put in place. Uh, but I just want to highlight that if the $600,000 in the fund were to be utilized to offset the $2.5 million purchase of the parcel, um, the remaining $1.9 million balance would need to be borrowed for, and this would require uh, both a CPC recommendation as well as a town meeting approval to borrow. Um, so those are just some of the logistics to keep in mind as we move through this process over the 120-day period.
Okay, um, Mr. King, can you summarize the letter, or do we need to summarize the letter that we see from Recreation? It, was it a letter in support of the acquisition, or was it a, um, a letter of the opposite?
Uh, it's, it, it appears that the Recreation Commission has, uh, some concern. I, I could, one of us could read the letter into record if you felt it be appropriate.
Do we have it in our packet? If we do, I'll ask Bill, uh, Selectman Harrington to read it into the-
Uh, it wa, it was a late submitted this morning.
Selectman Harrington, do you have it in your email?
I will, yes.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, um, when you have it, please read it into the record.
Yeah. I need to go back to email. All right, I am ready when you are, Mr. Vice Chair.
Please go. Thank you.
Okay, so it's, uh, from Jeff Plimpton, sent on the 11th of this month to his ward members, uh, and to Amanda and to Mike King. It says to Dan Board of Selectmen, it has come to our attention that a right of first refusal may be applied to the property located at 2095 West Street. Although this location has an offer of 2.5 million from a developer on the table, Rentham has the ability to block that sale by matching those funds and utilizing the site differently than what's being proposed. Funding for the purchase of this property will be difficult to obtain at this time and would need to be allocated from a combination of state grants, banked funds, and future designated CPA bond loans. Since $600,000 has been put aside in Open Space and Recreation Fund that the Board of Selectmen controls, we felt it appropriate to weigh in on the decision pertaining to those funds and our potential use of that space. According to the Open Space and Recreation Survey, in which the state evaluated Rentham's overall performance in areas of protection of open space and community recreational interactive availability, the state's primary concern was that we did not have areas of active recreation in Sheldonville. We have been hopeful that the town will have the funding to purchase a property in a centrally located area of West Rentham, so that portion of the funds being banked can be used to develop a few fields and a potential play space for families in the area. At this time, with the minimal information that we have, this site would not appear to meet the parameters of what we would be suitable for recreational development. We anticipate for future of that part of town. However, it is, however, if it is approved by the Board of Selectmen in town meeting, two-thirds, we will work with the monies allotted and find a way to make it work. Respectfully, Jeff Plimpton, Director of Town Rent and Recreation, and it was also seed, seed to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. Um, so at this time, Mike King, uh, Intrum Town Manager Mike King, do you have anything to add before I turn it over to Chairman McKnight for him and his board to discuss?
Yeah, I, I would just add in terms of, in summarizing that letter, uh, a little bit, is that there, there could be some concern, uh, if the town were to go out and borrow, uh, to fund this acquisition, um, that that would burden the community preservation funds with significant debt, um, which may impact the CPC's ability to fund future projects.
Right. To, to be quite blunt, I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't it dramatically impact the CPC's, uh, uh, availability to, 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 you know, secure future parcels or to take on more debt? Wouldn't it be pretty much at that point out of money?
Yeah, I mean, you'd be, you'd be tapping the, the entire land acquisition fund, so all $600,000. Um, and then in addition, you'd be looking at a debt service-
Right.
-of a six-figure annual debt service for the CPC fund, uh, which would, you know, significantly alter its availability, um, to fund large projects in the future.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. McKnight, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gal. Uh, we did bring this up at our meeting last Wednesday. Uh, we spoke a bit about the parcel. Um, I think, i-if I summarize, uh, what the Planning Board would be looking for, and I think we had our time long, timeline wrong. We thought we only had 30 days, which meant we might have to- which meant we might have to make a, a vote tonight, but as I understand it, we have 120 days. Um, if the summary of the discussion was, we really didn't have a lot of information. I think we wanted to hear from Open Space Committee, if I recall, and where does this property fit on their priority list? Um, if we have that, and maybe some of the other, other, uh, constituents, um, feedback and information, it would give the planning board something to review. We could certainly put it on our agenda for next Wednesday. Not Wednesday, the 19th, um, if in fact we had more information to deliberate on, and then, um, if somebody could help us with what would be our final, uh, deadline for us, and then what you would have to do to schedule it, sort of stay within the timeframe. It would help us to know whether we have one meeting to deliberate this with, or maybe we could bring it into, uh, the first meeting in March too. So that was our conversation, um, but I'll, I'll see if any other planning board member has another request for information that we need to, uh, to use for our deliberations. Um, I won't go down the list, but, uh, please speak if you do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, through you, if I could just ask, Mr. King. So we have 120-day, um, what, what is the drop dead date? What is that 120-day from the time that the town was first notified? Do you have that date by chance?
I, I do have that date. So we received it on, uh, January 27th, so the, the 100-day, 120-days will be May 27th. Um, and it's important to note that we'd have to schedule a town meeting in between that timeframe.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to get a, wrap my head around how much time we have, and also for, for people who might be on the meeting. And just as, as a bit of a clarification on the CPC money, um, while that would strap the portion of the CPC funding that is allotted to open space, um, purchasing, there, there's, there's a number of banks of money that, that make up the CPC funding. So it's not, it wouldn't tap all the money in the CPC, but it would, for all intents and purposes, tap all the money for open space purchase, but there would still be money in the bank for housing, um, historic preservation, and then the general, um, open, undesignated funds. So just, just a, a bit of a point of clarification on that. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else at this time. Thank you.
Any other planning board member?
Chairman. Yes, uh, through you to Mr. King. Okay, uh, Mr. King, so if, if we committed the $600,000 that we have in that bucket now, it would deplete the open space and recreation budget, uh, bu, bucket. Is that correct? That's what you just said?
Uh, it would be the, it would be the fund that town meeting has been setting aside for the last three years, um, annually $200,000. So that would, that would be depleted.
Okay, so then you're going to borrow, what is it, 1.9?
1.9 would be the difference.
And you borrow that over how many years?
Uh, so, you know, you have an option. Uh, it could be 10, 15, 20 years. Um, I, I would say-
If you take the longest allowable amortization, uh, y, you would, you would, you, would you, would you be, you said six figures?
Yeah, so, you know, I, running, running my analysis, um, at 20 years, right? Uh, you'd be at about $140,000 annually for debt service load.
And it is acceptable, uh, under the, uh, CPA law to, to, uh, borrow that money under the, under the aegis of the CPC. Is that correct? So that, so that you would have to appropriate at least 140,000 every year, either out of that bucket, if you've put something into it, or out of the general bucket. Can't take it out of historical preservation, can you?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So you're back with the same, really, you only have two buckets to work with here to do, to do anything, right? You could, you've got the bucket designated for the purpose, and you've got the general which could serve as supplement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you'd be-
Do you, um, do you, uh, we also, would we also have the ability to borrow the money out of the town's general fund? Or must it be borrowed through and paid through the CP, CPC, CPA Act?
So, you know, that, that, that's, that's an interesting proposition. I think that, I think I just want to clarify the difference between the, the two, just, uh, so, general fund, you'd, you'd be looking at an increase in taxes, right? Um, whether that, most likely a debt ex, debt exclusion to pay for this, um, portion. However, with a CPC for, or Community Preservation Committee's CPA funds, so the Community Preservation Act funds, um, that, that's a finite amount of money. That's, that's 1% of the, of the tax, tax bill. Um, so you're not increasing taxes per se, if you're using CPC funds to fund the project. You're just limiting the availability of funds, so you're encumbering them in terms of debt service, which would affect your ability to do future projects, because you're not able to raise that, right? You're not able to raise the threshold above the 1% tax that's already in existence that was voted, but, when the Rentham adopted the act.
Thank you. And finally, from, uh, from me, Mr. King, uh, what is the, uh, I know I have this, but I forget everything these days. Wha, wha, what do we take into the CPC, the CPA fund annually with that 1%? How much is that?
So, the, the budget this year, uh, la, this year is 408,000. Um, I'd have to pull up the exact amount and, uh, get back to you in terms of last year's revenue total.
Okay, so you're looking, if you did a 20-year amortization, 140,000 a year, and you're 408,000, I mean, that might increase over time, but that's, that's more than a quarter of the total appropriation of the total, total amount collected. Am I getting that right?
So, keep in mind, um, two things. One, uh, you're looking about a $40,000 annually for that bucket that goes into Recreation.
Mm-hmm.
And then this year, we had a budgeted reserve of 220,000. So you, you could offset the Recreation bucket by, let's say it's 140,000, 40,000, which means you look at your budget of reserve of 220, you take the remaining 100 off of that. So leaves you with, uh, $120,000 annually to possibly do other recreation-related projects.
Okay. In your opinion, would that be enough, looking out over the next five years, eh? Well, that severely restrict what we're trying to do with the CP, CPA funds.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the concern is, you know, sometimes you don't know what the good project is going to be until it comes to you, right? Um, or, or if a property might come out of chapter land in the future that, um, you know, may, may also be desirable that the town's looking at. Uh, so, you know, if, if you're deborrowing for 20 years, you're taking on that debt for a significant amount of time. So the question is, for this, you know, it's really for the, the CPC, because they're the ones who have to make the recommendation in terms of utilizing the funds at the end of the day before it can go to town meeting, is are they comfortable with utilizing those funds and, uh, for this debt service, and in terms of what they have for long-term goals or other projects they may have in mind that may be coming down the pipeline?
That's a good answer. Thank you, Mr. King. I know we have a couple of members of the CPC here tonight, maybe they'd want to chime in on that too, as to how much we would be restricting ourselves to, you know, uh, from doing some good, uh, good projects otherwise. Thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Um, any other planning board? I see Mr. Harrington has his, his hand up.
Let's, let's wait till you pass it back to me.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Any other planning board comments? Um, we will endeavor to keep this on our meeting for the 19th, on, uh, Wednesday, the 19th. Uh, and would ask that any information that flows from any other of the, the boards or committees, uh, be funneled through to Rachel, so that we can have that information and make an informed, uh, recommendation as quickly as possible. Appreciate that. Uh, no further comments from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I would ask the same thing. You or your board hear anything, uh, through any of the, you know, other interesting, uh, other interested boards, uh, please make sure to let Mike King know, so he can disseminate the in, information to us. Um, and now I, I'd like to turn it over to the select board, um, to ask follow-up questions and comments. I know Selectman Harrington wanted to say something, so we'll start with Selectman Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just a couple of things on CPC. Uh, so, so we do currently have some debt that we're paying off, uh, for playground. And we're paying off some debt for two projects that were funded for recreation, for walking trails that, uh, never came to fruition. Uh, we're paying off some debt for, uh, a study for the, uh, Metacomic Greenway now. So we do, CPC already has some debt in, uh, Recreation, Open Space buckets. And the other point that you, you know, really need to take into consideration is hypothetically, if they do buy the property, uh, on a 20-year note, you're going to be paying close to a million dollars additionally in interest. So that, you know, you want to try and keep it to as short a term as possible, which would really cripple the budget for CPC. And now that you hypothetically have this property, how are you going to develop it, and what are you going to develop it into? Um, uh, uh, you know, is it walking trails? Is, I mean, it's, uh, my understanding is it's, um, you know, it's really not conducive for fields, baseball fields, soccer fields. Uh, so just all food for thought while you're pondering your decisions. Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Selectman Harrington. Uh, Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, so my biggest concern is this. I, I think that's, that's a large number for that piece of property, considering, you know, going down the road, we're still going to be paying for, um, Tri-County. The Rentham Elementary School is putting in a new building. We have a project with the Weld on the West End, and also, um, a potential DPW building. I, I just think going back to the taxpayers and asking for more, more money is going to be, uh, a tough sell. I, I just know. And, uh, that's my comment, and I'll, I'll let you guys, you know, think it over.
Oops, sorry. Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectwoman Rouse.
Yes, I think that Selectboard Anderson and Harrington, um, summarized concerns, especially the financial impact. Um, Chairman McKnight mentioned the ranking. I was interested in knowing, you know, how that ranked in terms of, of interest in town, um, and, and any intent of use of it. Um, reading Jeff Plimpton's letter, it really doesn't seem like it's going to fit anything that Recreation would want or, or use. And I know a significant amount of wetlands in, in that, um, area too. So no really further comments. But again, the financial impact is certainly a, a top priority.
Great. I appreciate that feedback. And like we said, we'll keep both boards informed of any additional information, so that both boards can make, um, educated decisions. So at this time, um, I think that is everything that we had on our joint meeting agenda. Mr. King, do you agree we've accomplished the task at hand this evening with the Planning Board, Selectboard Joint Meeting?
I agree, and I will note that the Selectboard has one more agenda item for after the Planning Board adjourns.
So at this time, I would like to, uh, uh, graciously, uh, turn the meeting back over to Chairman McKnight and ask that you and the Planning Board adjourn, and have a wonderful evening, and it was great to see you. Thank you for being on the joint meeting with us. Thank you for all you do for our town, and, uh, we really appreciate you. So have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo, Selectboard Members, and interim town manager, uh, Mr. King. Uh, do we have a motion to close the Planning Board's, uh, portion of this joint meeting, uh, this evening?
I'll move it second.
You have a motion, we have a secondary discussion. Roll call, vote. Mr. Boassi.
Aye.
Mr. English.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence, still absent. Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Mr. Orban.
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams.
Aye.
Mike McKnight, aye. Six in favor, one absent, and one opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everybody. Okay.
Thank you.
Selectboard, one more item on our agenda. Um, and that is to discuss, uh, vote to authorize negotiation for town manager contract. Um, so as you know, at the last meeting, we had a vote, um, to, uh, vote in interim town manager Mike King pending successful contract negotiation. Um, we now have to get into the contract negotiation aspect of the conversation. Um, typically going from past, I asked, you know, I, I, I spoke to Kevin, actually, talked to Mike, um, and asked, you know, typically how this was done in the past, uh, with Joe. Um, and Mike, please feel free to chime in if I'm saying anything out of school here. But traditionally, it's been a negotiation between, preliminary negotiation between the chairman, uh, or, uh, the chairman of the Selectboard and the candidate, and then, once, you know, rough terms were met, uh, they would then bring that information to the full Selectboard, uh, to have a discussion and/or a vote. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. King?
Yes, I, I agree with that.
Okay, so what I'm looking for then from our board, uh, is for you to authorize myself to, uh, have these conversations with Mike King. I would, however, um, if it's okay with the board, uh, due to the fact that I haven't negotiated too many of these, uh, contracts, um, and I know that Michelle has, uh, and she's also an HR professional. Uh, if the will of the board would allow, I would ask you to allow me to also have her present with me to help negotiate, um, the contract with Mr. King. Once we have our preliminary findings, we'll bring all the information back to the full board, uh, to obviously have a discussion, and your blessing.
Mr. Vice Chair, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to appoint Vice Chair Chris Gallo and Selectboard Member Michelle Rouse to negotiate a term for interim Mike King to become permanent town manager.
I'll second that.
So just a clarification, you made a motion that myself and Michelle, uh, would work directly with Mike in negotiating his contract to ratify it, um, and then bring the findings back to the whole board. Um, is that, I just want to clarify.
Clarified. That is correct.
And was there a second?
I second.
Okay, uh, let's do roll call vote. Uh, Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse, yes. Happy to help out.
Sorry, go ahead. What was that?
I just said happy to help out.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for your, uh, willingness to do so. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, the strong, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Gallo, yes. Motion carries four to zero. That's great. Mike, anything else we need to discuss with this topic?
No, uh, that, that covers it. Thank you.
I would just like to say to the board, thank you for your, uh, support and confidence, and myself and Michelle. I promise that we will, uh, you know, uh, do the best of our ability, make sure that we, uh, offer Mr. King a, a competitive contract, but at the same time, always keeping the taxpayers of Rentham, uh, our constituents in top priority. So I appreciate your, um, vote of confidence. Thank you so much. Um, a, at this time, Mike, does that conclude our agenda as well?
It does, Vice Chair Gallo.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Selectman Anderson, in keeping with wonderful tradition.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. With your permission, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have, we had a motion made by Selectman Anderson? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rouse. Let's do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all for the special meeting. Thanks for taking time out of your busy schedules and families. The town appreciates you, and I appreciate you.
This is our, what, second meeting, third meeting in a row?
I don't know.
I feel like every Tuesday night.
I feel like we meet every Tuesday night, so.
Lately, we do.
Yeah, so you guys are great. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.